All right, would you all please rise and join me for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, this is the Monday, December 11, 2017, regular meeting of Town Council. Hello, how are you? Good evening. Sure. Shaun, I think you have one here. Isn't that yours? Is that?
It's got it.
Yeah, I'm sure. We're probably all off my wrong, right? It's like four turn your left and I'll probably take the image all the way down. Go around the corner. I have one. Just gonna wait a moment for our clerk to set up.
I can't just spread out so you can just shove it back. Okay, I'm spread out too.
Take it back. All right. So for roll call, all members of council are present this evening, as is our first selectman. Before we begin to get too far, do I have a motion before each member of council? We should have an amended, proposed amended agenda, which includes the addition of item H to consent, O, P, and Q to communications. Is there a motion to amend the agenda to include those items?
So, motion.
Motion by Mr. Lepelis is our second. Second by Mr. Condon. Any discussion?
Just one item on the item H with the town attorney agreement. I know that there was supposed to be an LNA meeting originally, which was canceled, where I assume that would've been the main topic of discussion. Do we want to leave that as consent calendar, or should we move it to new business?
It's up to, I always give any member of council historically, if any member of council wishes to discuss any matter on the consent calendar, I always give them full authority to ask, and I will generally grant that request. If you prefer to do that, we can do that.
I have no problem leaving it as is. I just wanted to raise the point in case anybody from LNA or had any reason to want to discuss that.
I don't, I'm not, I don't believe it's an issue that comes to LNA, does it?
It would've come to LNA this evening. But you know what? Let's do this, just so rather than having this discussion now, instead of H under consent, we'll remove H under consent, and we'll add that as item E under new business. So I'll withdraw my motion, and I'll ask for a new motion adding, amending the agenda, adding O, P, and Q to communications and E to new businesses.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Mauer. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Ms. Lepelis. Any discussion on this new motion? All right, seeing none, I'll call for holdalls in favor. Against, that motion carries nine to zero. So we're not working with an amended motion. Before we begin, again, I want to just thank members of council and all the members that were able to join us this evening, individuals that were able to join us this evening for your courtesy and permitting of the meeting to start late this evening so that we could support our Massic Panthers. Hopefully, there's been miraculous comeback, but.
Thirty-five twenty-one.
Okay, so it didn't look well when we all left, but you know, we're very proud of them and their effort. Just was a great accomplishment even getting to that championship game. They had a wonderful season, and I just really thought it shows the strength of our community. And I've received so many requests from individuals wanting to participate in our town legislative business, but also be able to watch the team this evening. So thank you for those of you who brought it to my attention and were willing to move the meeting. So I just want to thank everybody for that. We hope it doesn't, it's not a rare occurrence, right? But I doubt there's gonna be many championship games played on a Monday, Monday evening. Moving forward, the consent calendar, are there any comments, objections, amendments regarding the consent calendar? Ms. Aguilera.
Mr. Chairman, item F, the quality data service taxpayer, if I may ask a discussion on it before we, because it was on our LNA agenda to discuss tonight. And with LNA being canceled, I had a question for anybody who knows about it, the first selectman, about it. Do we know, Mr. Kellag, do we know if?
Why don't we just, if your motion is to remove it from consent, we'll just add it to new business.
Okay, great.
So if you, if you just make a motion to remove item F from the consent calendar and add it as new business.
To item F as new business.
The motion by Ms. Aguilera is our second.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Lepelis. We heard Ms. Aguilera's reason. Any further discussion or comment, Ms. Aguilera?
No.
Anybody else? All right. Holdalls in favor? Against, motion carries nine to zero. So add that as F. Any further comments, objections, requested amendments to consent? All right, seeing none, I'll pass the consent calendar, omitting F and just F from our regular agenda. Moving on to communications, we now have A through Q. I'm gonna ask that those communications be incorporated into our minutes this evening. That takes us to public participation. Would any members of the public participate at this time? All right, seeing none, I'm gonna close, public participation. Hey, just have a moment, please. These are our committees that we appoint to, that are, the Fire Services Study Committee was created through council. The Pension Committee was also created as a cooperative between council and the Board of Finance, and actually is required legislatively in order to accomplish a lot of the work, business that's done with the Pension Committee. So for the appointment to the Fire Services Study Committee, I'm going to appoint Mr. Condon. And to the Pension Committee, there are two representatives appointed to that subcommittee, sorry, committee. That'd be Ms. Lepelis and Mr. Mauer from council. So I'll make sure that Ms. Bombero does include you in on all correspondence moving forward, scheduled meetings, and things of that nature to get you up to speed.
Not to question what's hiding need, hiding need does the pension in terms of the emails.
So we'll go through Ms. Bombero. Yes.
May I, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
And just as a, as just an advance warning to those members, we do anticipate a special meeting being called in the near future to deal with the matter, so a policy change, so just a heads up.
Moving on to action items. So last meeting, we did appoint council members to new subcommittees. So I believe the only subcommittee that had the opportunity to meet in light of our change in schedule this evening is the Planning and Zoning Public Works Parking Recreation Committee. So just moving forward orderly, in line with the agenda, the first action item would be the Report Safety, that's a new committee, has not met yet, so we will not have a report from them. B is the Aforeset Committee, Planning and Zoning Public Works Parking Recreation Matters. And I understand that Ms. Lepelis has a report for us from that subcommittee.
We met, we picked Enid Lepelis as the chair, and there's three members, Shaun O'Rourke, Dee Dee Martin, and myself. And Mrs. Martin will be liaison to Park and Rec, and Mr. O'Rourke and I will take up the rest of it. And there's a lot of little committees, like EDC and IT. So my first report is with the planning and zoning. I went last Thursday night to listen to about the temporary healthcare structures. And the report from P&amp;Z is the statute allows the property owners to place a temporary healthcare structure on their property, and they voted, P&amp;Z voted to opt out of Public Act seventeen dash one five five. If the council opts out of the statute, well, let me go back one line. The town council's asked to vote whether to opt out of the statute pursuant to the commission's recommendation. If the council opts out of the statute, the commission plans on drafting its own regulations in regard to temporary healthcare structures. The reasons for opting out were provided in a document that we have all received now that we've had a meeting, this meeting. So that's, that's from Planning and Zoning. And I made the mistake of meeting Donna Verdisco, who's the EDC chair, and saying, gee, could you give me a report? And I got seven pages, which I think if I read them, we'd all be asleep. So just very, very quickly, she's extremely thorough. The first thing they talked about is the Monroe Deli opened up, this is a New Delhi in town, the shooting range has been completed, and the commission is looking for new business development. So they discussed the need to make a flyer, a brochure, to be provided to any applicants so land use in the various departments can inform them of the EDC. And they also mentioned that their primary focus is on new commercial business development, and they're proactively gonna focus going after leads that will add to our grant list. And that's it.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lepelis. Moving on to action item C, that would be Legislative and Administrative Matter Subcommittee. That meeting was canceled this evening, so that committee, that newly formed committee has not met. Ditto for Strategic Planning, newly formed committee has not met. EMS Facility Work Group, I know that, as I said, that's a dormant subcommittee. It'll be replaced with the Building Committee, which I understand should names have been selected for that very large committee. And I want to thank everybody for their input on that, and we should have some finale to that by our next meeting. That takes us to the first selectman's update. Mr. Kellag.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a few things I wanted to cover tonight. First of all, in your packages, as I know, you've received my communication tonight in that I have appointed Mr. Jeremy Hayden as the town attorney. Mr. Hayden is here tonight in the audience, so I wanted to introduce him to those of you who may not met him, if you wanna give a wave. Mr. Hayden is a graduate from UConn in Quinnipiac, Law Review editor, his practice is quite broad, has covered everything from residential and commercial, as well as significant municipal background with, in land use and in tax appeals. He's very involved in the community, ranging from Pop Warner, Chamber, and was also the chairman of Inland Wetlands, and was a commissioner on our Planning and Zoning Commission previous year as well. With that, I also wanted to note for the record that I intend to continue the services of Mr. Fracassini as a special counsel during a transition period. Mr. Fracassini will remain very involved in the short term as we move forward, and I wanted to, on the record, thank him for his many years of service and dedication to the town of Monroe and serving us with distinction. Second item I wanted to bring up was the budget process. In the packet, you've got communication from, from me to all department heads and the chairman of commissions, et cetera, those with budget responsibility. Just wanted to ensure everyone that process is well underway, although, albeit, you know, slightly, usually the process starts a little bit earlier, but with the election transition, that was not possible. We are well on our way and gaining speed in that regard. I want to thank our finance department for, they're not, currently not here at the moment. They've done a tremendous amount of work assisting me in establishing new templates for the budget books and packages. I think you'll be happy with some of the changes. We're looking to continually evolve and improve the budget process in terms of how the information's presented, and my goal is to standardize as much as possible so that it is a easy, now, not that it isn't an easy document already, but particularly having the backup sections kind of comport with the budgetary information as well, and have it all in a standardized fashion. Other than that, the, obviously, I'm sure you're aware that the Board of Education is currently deliberating on the budget process. The superintendent has delivered his preliminary budget to the Board of Ed. They will be deliberating for the balance of, essentially, the balance of this month. They will deliver a, a budget to my office, which will then be part of the package that ultimately comes to you for February eighth. So more, more to follow on that. In regards to two other items, one that was on your previous agenda, one's on tonight, I just wanted to update you on the AT&amp;T cell tower project, even though it is not on the agenda tonight, I wanted to just report back that that process is still ongoing. I have been endeavoring, and I thank Mr. Reed for his assistance in scheduling a meeting with AT&amp;T so we can kind of, so I can discuss this further in my office and be brought to speed on what their plans are and what the, just what the process was to date. So that meeting has been scheduled, but it wasn't anything that we could, you know, certainly not meet on a resolve prior to tonight's meeting, so more to follow once I have some more information, some recommended actions there. And as far as the Wolf Park Field, the agreements with TPA and that process, I've, I've had several discussions with both Mr. Cooper on that, as well as, he was our Parks and Rec Director, as well as our Parks and Rec Chairman, Mr. Scott, and we've had, I think we all agree that the, the services that we need, the documents, the process are definitely necessary. However, I have further, after speaking with them, there's further details I want to look into. There's some questions in regards to what work has been done already in the prior agreement versus what is contemplated here. And I guess, as much as we need to continue moving this forward, I'd like some additional time to delve into the next level of detail before we, we come back to you and ask for a proposal to move forward, whether it's with TPA or some other avenue. That is it for that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kellag.
Okay.
Ms. Martin, sure.
Mr. Kellag, welcome. The budget submission, and you've copied on that, and I appreciate that. It says, you refer to templates provided. Would we be, by any chance, be able to have an idea what those templates are like, or see them, or is that inappropriate?
I believe Mr. Lito would've been provided the template for the town council's budget, so I would certainly have, you know, that would be perhaps one that you could familiarize yourself with and.
Yeah, I'm happy to share the template. I mean, really what the template is, is it's a, it facilitates the uploading of the requested line items in an orderly fashion so that it can be populated into the system.
Okay.
So it's not, it's not necessarily directive, it's.
Correct.
An Excel form.
There's, there's two, there's a Word template and an Excel template. The Word solicits the narrative and the, the format and structure that we'd like ultimately in the budget books, and as the chairman alluded to, the Excel template does that. What is, what is different this year is that the departments and commissions and boards are submitting details that will build into the line items for the budget as you, as you stated.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I'll be consulting with you on all the line items, Ms. Martin.
Oh, I'm sure you will.
Questions of Mr. Kellag, even though they're not always permitted? All right. Moving on, thank you, Mr. Kellag. Moving on to unfinished business, so the Chalk Hill updates have no further updates. Mr. Kellag, I'm not sure if you have any updates. I think everything is.
Not this time.
Any questions? It's an agenda item. I'm gonna leave it there until there's finale. All right, moving on to the Fire Study Status Report. That actually should come off the agenda. It's there, the, Mr., it was here this week for Attorney Fracassini to provide the fully executed agreement that was approved by council. He did provide that to me. So that is an item that's, has been resolved for now. We can certainly check back in relative to that, should the committee think that, Fire Services Study Committee think that there's an appropriate update, Mr. Kellag.
And I could just briefly update you in that, the, that contract was executed by Mr. Vabrik, as you know, it was prior to the election. And I know that the company has reached out, and we are connecting him with Mr. Daven so that that process can commence in terms of the study.
Questions, comments?
So do we want to leave it on there, or are you gonna take it on?
I'll let you know at the next agenda.
All right.
Moving on to item C is the temporary healthcare structures. And I just wanted to give a little bit of an advisory as to how we're gonna proceed this evening. As Ms. Lepelis alluded to, there was a meeting December seventh, I believe, this past week that was a public hearing noticed by Planning and Zoning, and basically had two options to opt out or continue to opt in. And as we heard last time, relative to the procedure in the last meeting, requires both Planning and Zoning and the town council to act in order to opt out. And we also heard that at any time in the future, should we want to opt back in, there's a procedure for that as well. My understanding is that Planning and Zoning did choose to opt out after that hearing. I know Mr. Agresta is present this evening to give us a report, but, Mr. Kellag, I'll just turn the floor over to you if you wish to say anything about this procedure, and then Mr. Agresta can give his piece.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Lito.
So actually, I didn't finish my thought, I'm sorry. I set you up on that one. So we have to determine whether we want to vote to opt out or opt in. So what I'd like to do is, just so the motion is appropriate and not misleading to any members of council, we'll hear from Mr. Kellag, we'll hear from Mr. Agresta, then I'll kind of poll council for a motion based upon what we hear. And we have a few options. One is, we can vote on it this evening, or if we think it's more appropriate for further information, I can decide, and I'm welcome to listen to any members of council, to refer back to subcommittee for further investigation or discussion. But we'll leave it at that, and I just want everybody to understand what I was thinking. And moving forward, we'll work on a process or procedure. So, Mr. Kellag, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And, you know, much of what I was gonna preface this discussion with, we've covered with Ms. Lepelis's report and yourself, what I can just further add is that Attorney Fracassini had provided a packet with additional details and background and supporting materials, which hopefully you've been able to familiarize yourself with. As, as you've alluded to, this is a statute that basically allows for what they call temporary healthcare structures, and many, many communities have, have evaluated this and have felt that the way the statute is currently crafted, while certainly well-intentioned in that it provides for a solution for, for those that may need care on a temporary basis and to allow for that, while well-intentioned, the legislation is not, several have, several opinions that the legislation is not crafted that well, and creates too many concerns for municipalities relative to ability for the municipality have ongoing, ability to understand the need for, in other words, the individual maintaining the qualifications that would be the condition precedent to granting the approval in the first place. A lot of it involves medical evaluations and ongoing establishment of that, and also the concern of ability of staff to continually have to inspect such a structure without really having a need to go on there. There's some, there's some concerns in how it's written, and it really isn't crafted well. So the process, as you alluded to, is that the statute allows that after a public hearing by Planning and Zoning, which was held on the seventh, should the Planning and Zoning Commission choose to opt out, which they did, it then goes to the legislative body. And if you choose to opt out, we would, it would preclude anyone from filing an application. There is no, there's not necessarily a timeline that we're concerned about, however, currently right now, if an application were to come in, we would be bound by the statute as it exists. So there is somewhat of a, I won't say a risk, but there is a, you know, there's an issue that if an application were to come in and a project were to go forth and it was not formulated in the way that we felt was appropriate, we would not have a lot of, we wouldn't have nearly as much say as we would like, should it be under our own regulations. So with that said, I will defer to Mr. Agresta, who has many more details on this than I. He can also review, review the reasons that the Planning and Zoning Commission articulated in their memo, which is also a condition precedent to opting out, which could further explain some of the concerns that they had relative to legislation, so.
Mr. Agresta.
The summaries are actually very good, it covers a lot of the grounds. These rules of legislation is, it sort of, in some respects, supersedes local control. It states that towns are to allow in their single-family zones these temporary healthcare structures, which are under the regulations to be temporary in nature, and they could be placed on these properties. The main regulation that stays intact would be the underlying zones, setback requirements. These structures, I believe, is a 500 square foot or less facility. It can't have a permanent foundation. Obviously, the issues relating to water and separate disposal are covered in the legislation, but those are one of the areas that are not so well. Septics systems on the single-family homes, separate buildings have to have separate septic systems. Here, the thought would be to tie into the septic system, be treated much like an overflow of the P-100, where you can add a bedroom if you can show your septic can handle it. This would fall into that process, but the state health department would still have to give an exception for this issue and the indication that they would do that, obviously the filing suit with the state legislation. But nonetheless, that would be that process. There is a requirement, there is a requirement for a public hearing, yet there is a requirement for public noticing to neighbors, but there doesn't seem to be any avenue for them to do anything with that notice, other than to be notified. I suppose their only recourse would be, we would issue a permit and they could appeal the permit. But they could interject, have opinion, talk about things, and no one could massage an application to make it fit into the neighborhood. And that's another thing, it doesn't really deal with issues of compatibility with the neighborhood. You may have seen some of the documentation for these things that were in published, they showed cute little building, but that isn't necessarily what you're gonna get. You could get those, but you could also get something that doesn't look much more than a construction truck. The other issues that were come up is why the Planning and Zoning Commission ultimately decided in their decision to opt out and recommended to you to opt out, or some of those issues I just mentioned, but the others were clearly the verification of the impaired person's health status. I mean, that's not something that we deal with. And there's even probably privacy issues associated with that that we can't even get into. And then monitoring that on a yearly basis. There's also the fact that the caregiver can't receive money for the care. Very hard to figure that out or to trace that. One scenario was somebody would rent them the structure, and the care comes with the rental of the structure. They're not getting money for the care, they're getting the rent for the structure. So there are ways that people could exploit that. The other is that where does it really fit into some of these, a lot of places, smaller properties, it would be difficult to locate, so you may end up having this thing right in the front yard, right in the driveway, and then we may have some issue with parking and, and again, the neighborhood character issue. There's another issue, you can require a bond, but some of the criticism of that was, okay, fine, the town can call a bond, but it doesn't necessarily say, what do you do with the structure? The bond covers the removal from the property, but not necessarily the disposition of the structure. The other problem that comes with that, even with calling a bond, legitimately, the person who's impaired could, could leave, no more be, be that property, but the homeowner could start using and occupy it. Now we have to get into, you know, with enforcing in trying to get someone out of a, out of a facility. So those are enforcement issues that, that really aren't well thought out in this code. And that was probably one of the biggest things when I went to a conference for this particular subject, and a lot of planners were in a room, and they all kind of said the same thing, like, how are we gonna enforce this? So there are some other issues that came up with regards to having to deal with the code. We did have to hear, there were, he was the only one that was commenting, there was no other public comment relative. And the commission did see that, it was their opinion that the ordinance wasn't well thought out, there were some real questionable enforcement issues, things that we cannot handle with current staff and current resources, and that we should opt out, and maybe recommend that we should opt out at all. And I think as was said, in order to opt out, both entities would have to opt out.
Thank you, Mr. Agresta. Any questions, comments for Mr. Agresta?
Just one, it's obviously a poor act. The act, you know, with all the data that we have, it's poorly written. Is there any concept that doing this ourselves with some other plans in? Is there any concept that doing this ourselves with some other plans in town? I mean, the concept of having extended care to be a homeowner is a valid one. I mean, the cost differentiation is huge and the need for seniors to have some kind of resources, also valid. We have a very elderly community and it's only growing over time. Is there any planning to look at something, some concept to meet that need?
I think perhaps one, one option for the town is to maybe improve upon our accessory apartment regulations. We do allow accessory apartments in all the RF1, RF2, and RF3 districts. But right now, they're restricted to being in the principal house. So, there are other options where they could be in an accessory structure, whether that be an existing structure or you build one. And maybe some other aspects to liberalize some of those requirements, make it a little easier, less costly for someone to do that. There's also perhaps some ability to do some temporary conversions within a house for the period in time. You know, to allow similar, an extra bedroom in a way. And, and maybe with the V-100, of course, that counts. It could work, that may even be able to stay even in the long run. Personally, I did that with my own family. My grandmother needed a place to live when she was not well. We were able to convert a lower room downstairs by putting up a fake wall, a door, and a shower. And when she no longer needed, those things went away. You know, it was very inexpensive solutions that we were able to do. Not everyone could do that, but that, I think those kinds of things could be looked at.
Mr. Reed?
Mr. Agresta, thanks. That was concise. Moving aside, if this is a good act or not, let's not get into that. But say we were to endorse this as written. I'm assuming it's the ZEO that would enforce this?
Yeah, basically this would mean accessory is no different than adding a shed, adding a cool tier.
So the ZEO is the enforcement agency? Thanks.
Anybody else? All right, seeing none, um, there's no further discussion. Just to be clear on the process, again, we would vote this evening to opt out. Should we not think opting out is appropriate or not want to reaffirm what planning and zoning has already done, the process would be that we would have to call our own public hearing, receive input, I believe, and then vote to opt in to start that process, I believe. That's the statute. We don't? To opt back in?
Oh, not that way.
That's what I'm talking about, right. So should we not want to opt out, we would have to then call a public hearing to opt back in. So, does someone want, I mean, do we have enough information consensus wise? Want to have a discussion up here? Does anybody feel we have enough information? We provided the packet at the last meeting for our new members to get them up to speed. We have the information of the town attorney's opinion letter from Mr. Fracassini and some of the additional information from him. We have heard input from Mr. Agresta, planning and zoning has acted, and we've heard from Mr. Kellag. Mr. Reed?
Can you do a consensus before a motion?
Yes.
I think we have enough information, me personally.
I agree as well.
But a consensus will...
Anybody else? Mr. Condon, let's go down.
No, same thing.
Mr. Reed, Mr. Rennie? Mr. Reed?
I agree. Down the line, Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Prepare for a motion?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
All right. So in light of that, I'm going to take a stab at a resolution. So, the resolution to be considered would read, whereas the Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission held a duly noticed public hearing in accordance with CGS Section 8-7D in regard to consideration of opting out of the provisions of the State of Connecticut Public Act 17-155, wherein the commission, following full deliberation, voted five in favor and none in opposition, essentially that consistent with the provisions of the CGS Section 8.2A as amended pursuant to the State of Connecticut Public Act 17-155, that the commission determined and recommended that the Monroe Town Council, as the legislative authority on behalf of the town of Monroe, opt out of the aforementioned act. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Monroe Town Council hereby affirms the findings and recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission and hereby votes in favor, hereby moves to opt out of State of Connecticut Public Act 17-55 as required by the Connecticut general statutes.
Just second?
So, that's the resolution. If someone could move the resolution forward. Mr. Condon? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lepelis. Discussion. So again, the resolution will affirm the planning and zoning commission's findings and effectively opt us out as required by statute. Discussion, comments. Mr. Reed?
Just although this is something I think we do need to look into, I agree with Mr. Condon and we do need to do something about this in the future. Have to be able to take care of our loved ones and elderly, but as written, unplayable.
I wouldn't.
Anybody else? Mr. Mauer?
I would second that notion. This is certainly an issue that does need to be addressed in the town and I think is something that we should be looking at sooner rather than later, having, if we so choose to opt out of the state legislation. I agree, the state legislation in Public Act as written is not in the best interest of the town or in the best interest of the town's finances, considering the liabilities that it could pose. But whether it's through the, talking about the temporary apartments or through a new avenue, this is something that we should address on a rather vast basis.
Ms. Martin?
Yeah, I have a question. In Mr. Fracassini's letter, he said if the, it doesn't have a page three. If we decided at some point to opt back in, okay? And then the procedure is reversed, we have the town meeting, et cetera. But then he says at the end, and just if you could clarify for me, then the, so after we would do that and stating its reasons, blah, 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 then the planning and zoning commission would then have to take action to agree with the town council's decision at that point. Is that saying that if we, if this changed, we liked it better, we had a town, you know, a public hearing and said, yeah, we want to go ahead with this, does that say that they have to agree with us?
No, I believe that requires the consent and affirmation of both the legislative body as well as the planning and zoning commission.
So then the have to take action means, have to take action to agree?
In order for it to pass.
I see. Okay.
So we, you know, neither body, you know, rightly could.
I, that was my understanding.
Pass this.
Okay, thank you.
Any further comment, discussion on this issue? All right, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the resolution? And against, the motion carries nine to zero. Just to be clear, the resolution was phrased in a negative. So, the motion carrying opts us out of this temporary healthcare structure statute. All right. Thank you very much. Moving on to unfinished business, item D is the Wolf Park Multipurpose Fields Construction Documents Agreement. Mr. Kellag, to give us an update as to his wishes, it's on our agenda. I assume there will be no discussion, but there are questions, it's on the agenda, so it's open for discussion. Nothing? Okay. Moving on to our new business. A, we have the Whitetail Drive Hold Harmless Agreement. Ms. Lepelis has our motion?
I make a motion to approve the Hold Harmless Agreement/Whitetail Drive.
A motion by Ms. Lepelis, seeking to approve the agreement authorized the first elector to execute on behalf of the town of Monroe. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Condon. For discussion, I'm going to just ask Mr. Kellag to bring us up to speed since he's scared.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, the situation we have before you is, we have a relatively new subdivision. One of the streets is Whitetail Drive. The, the road is substantially completed and but for a clause within our subdivision regulations, we would be presenting this to you to accept a road, as a town road. In our subdivision regulations, there is a provision that we, we are precluded from accepting a road between October 31st, anytime after October 31st, it must be delayed until April 1st. However, the regulations also provide that should the town find that it's in our best interest to maintain the road relative to snow and ice removal, we can entertain a hold harmless agreement, which would protect the town's interest in the interim. So, I have met with Mr. Milwaukee, our director of Public Works. He is of the opinion that it is in the town's, it is in the town's best interest for us to plow and address, you know, snow and ice issues on that road during the, this winter season. I've also discussed this briefly with our, with Mr. Schatzlein as our town engineer, and there are no substantial issues relative to the street that he's concerned about. So, I do feel it is prudent at this point in time. We do have residents that are living on that road. So, you have the agreement before you. We would encourage you to consider this and allow us to execute this so that we can simply have Public Works plow and sand that road this year, or this winter.
Thank you, Mr. Kellag. One question I have in light of this recent storm, did the town provide these services during that storm?
No. So because this was still pending, Attorney Fracassini directly reminded the developer that they would be responsible during this past winter event, and that's what occurred.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments? Mr. Mauer?
I have one question that I did not see in this agreement. While it does create a hold harmless agreement with terms of plowing and ice removal and things of that nature, since this is not yet a public road by law, does there an effect on how this affects? If the town police or state police issue a ban on parking on the roads and places of that nature, how would this affect, how would that affect this road, so, so to speak? If, if somebody parks on that road without there being a, when there's a state of emergency and their car gets hit by a plow, by one of our town plows, how would that affect somebody's personal property, which isn't dealing with the actual road itself?
I, my, I'm certainly not, not a lawyer, but my opinion would be that, you know, in terms of the town ban, I mean, the ordinances for town roads, so technically, we would not be able to preclude the parking on the road there. But however, you know, that ordinance is there obviously for the safe and expeditious, you know, cleaning of, you know, cleaning and clearing of the road. Certainly, if Public Works were to go there and the vehicle, you know, there was unsafe to plow it, they certainly, you know, I would, I would certainly think we would deploy the police department as we would normally and ask them to remove the vehicles, but, you know, I guess technically ticketing and towing would not be possible.
I, I think the response to that is that the agreement's not obligatory on behalf of the town as opposed to the town's obligation to maintain and clear public roads. Therefore, if there was a vehicle precluding the ordinary or orderly maintenance of that road, the town simply would not have an obligation to provide the services.
I agree with that.
Any further questions or comments? So don't park on that road.
No, it's not.
In the storm. I have a question for Mr. Agresta. Do you, is your reading of our regulations that preclude, Mr. Kellag mentioned our regulations preclude acceptance of a road during a stated period of time. The regulations don't reference the word preclude certainly, but I think it's shall, shall not, is used. Do you, in your opinion, is the town truly bound by that verbiage? Or, as it seems to me, it's the intent of that regulation is to protect the town from being obliged to accept a road during a period of time that would, that would compel them to provide winter-type services? Is your reading that the town absolutely is without the right to accept a road during that period of time?
That is my opinion, they were such a shot off.
Mr. Schatzlein, do you agree with that?
You know, I wanted to add that I think that it's in addition to those concerns. I think from a technical perspective, I think they blocked out that time because there were some things that could happen during that period of time. If the road gets completed and it's wintertime, there could be some frost action, stuff like that, where we don't know until the spring, since we've gone ahead and accepted road and then all of a sudden the spring gets settled and something like that.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? So we have the motion that's been seconded. As you know, further discussion, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? And against, motion carries nine to zero. I'm just going to skip around a little bit. I intended to do so. We're going to move to item D, which is the resolution to transfer funds from the Board of Finance contingency to the Board of Ed, budget appropriation. So, is there a motion, Mr. Lepelis?
Yeah, if I can find it by skipping around, got it. I make a motion to approve the resolution to transfer from the Board of Finance to Board of Education appropriation. The Board of Finance contingency is taking $623,130 from it and it's going to the Board of Education for the same six, two, three, one, three, zero.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Lepelis to approve the resolution that is before us in our packet. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Mauer. Again, the motion is the charter of finance and town council approve this type of transfer and $623,130 from the BLF contingency, which is 150205, to the Board of Education General Finance, assuming, 151970. For discussion, we have Superintendent Batista here this evening. I don't know, Mr. Batista, if you'd like to just give us a quick summary of the intent of the transfer and what it encompasses?
Sure. There's two pots of money that we get from the state, the grants. One is the ECS grant. And that ECS grant comes to the town. And the other is the excess cost of special ed grant. And that's the money that comes to the Board of Ed. When the governor's budget came, when we were doing our budget back in April, there were discussions that we would, we were supposed to get $6 million from the ECS grant from the state bank that comes to the town. And the special ed grant that comes to the Board of Ed was going to be 1.5 million. And that was what we budgeted for. Well, what happened was, after everything settled down, is that ECS money that comes to the town, instead of being zero, the town actually got 5.5 million dollars. But the special ed grant, instead of being 1.5, was 8.71. So there was a shortfall in revenue. The spending is the same, it's our budget that the voters voted on, but there was a shortfall in revenue. So we're asking for that contingency to be, help with that shortfall.
Any questions for our superintendent? Mr. Rennie?
The ECS, the extra cost for special education, this money being transferred over to your, over to your group, that's specifically going to this area or?
Yes, it will go for special education.
Okay. So, if the money does go there, I mean hypothetically, that money could be designated or used in any way that the Board of, or they needed to do, to use it?
Yes, and we could transfer the funds. However, we do have a budgeted amount for the excess cost that we need to spend the special ed dollars.
But theoretically, that money could be put into other directions though. Is there any safeguards with regards to that not happening?
Well, we have to, we have to get the money to, we have a budgeted money for special education. We have a $623,000 shortfall, and so we have to make that up.
Is there any mechanism whereby the town could hold on to control that money and dispense that money based on invoices that are provided by the Board of Ed?
We do the invoices, that's how we spend the money anyway. So, yeah, it's the same thing for us. Our budget is all of it. We have the two POs, very high level, so it's safeguard that.
Are you talking about like a special reserve fund that would restrict the use of these funds only for... funds only for special education?
Yes.
Mr. Benovsky, you have anything on that, LeBron?
I mean, I guess it's possible. I don't know if it's, I don't know if it's necessary, but.
You just write a PO to a special county, or write a PO to our. It's the same. We have to spend the money for special education, there's no doubt about that. And the money is done through a PO. All our POs are there every month for the Board of Education and for everyone else to see, so you can see where that money was spent.
And hypothetically, if that money wasn't being spent, the recourse would be?
We would have a shortfall in our special ed budget amount.
Which would probably need to, obviously, more money being required.
They are bills, yes.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Batista, thanks, thanks for the, the update and the clarity. The six twenty-three has to be spent in special ed no matter what.
Right.
The six twenty-three, that's the shortfall, will be deducted somewhere else.
If.
And your proposal is fifteen to twenty teachers because of half-year layoffs.
Right, it's half a year, we don't have the, you know, we have the luxury of a whole fifty thousand dollars, so, yes, that's what you're saying.
So this is really not a six twenty-three in special ed. Special ed's getting covered no matter what.
Right, no matter what, we're going to pay those bills.
It has to by, by state statute.
Absolutely, thank you, yes. We're going to pay those bills no matter what.
Okay, I just, thanks.
Thank you.
Got it.
Any further discussion? I just want to thank you for your detailed letter to Mr. Callog, which did discuss the unfortunate reality of the alternative. Because the first question I had was, you know, while we, we have a great relationship between the town and our Board of Education, and we have a lot of trust and support for our fellow board and our department over there, I think it's important to be able to answer the questions that some citizens, albeit, probably not most, may have as to what the alternative sources of funding are for not only our projects, but for your projects as well. So I just want to tell you that I really appreciate showing us the grim reality of what the alternative would be, and that's helpful for us to make a decision in advance so that we don't have to have such a unfortunate discussion on the record. So I just want to thank you for that. Any further discussion?
Could I just add one more?
Sure.
Was there any discussion on other sources of deduction other than teachers, other than later?
The problem is eighty percent of our budget is salaries and benefits, and so, you know, would we try to, you know, freeze the budget? Yes, but we could only save a little bit of money, and we have to all come through instead.
So at best, it would only be about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in home. That's the twenty percent, right?
Right.
So about four fifty. Just curious if you guys have that conversation.
We certainly looked at all of that.
Okay.
As we do every year, but just, the eighty percent of the budget is really not the cause of, and we certainly are trying to look at staffing that would be not necessary. Outside of, with that, we didn't choose anything like that.
Mr. Zama, you can't squeeze any more out of a printer project?
I wish.
It was such a successful project.
Mr. Or?
And just to clarify, nature of my questions was just simply to vet the process with regards to the funds going to where it has to go.
Has the, I, I know that the Board of Education has already deliberated and established their budget for our next fiscal year. Has this shortfall been taken into consideration in that budget?
Absolutely. What we did for this, for the next year's excess cost of special ed grant, is we figured it the same way we always did. This one point five was from the governor's budget, so that's why we figured, but we didn't do that for next year. We figured it exactly how we've done in the past, using the formula, using the exact kids that we have.
Okay.
So we will not have this problem now.
Okay. That was my answer, so thanks. Any further discussion?
No.
All right, call for a vote. All those in favor and against, motion carries nine to zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item C, which is also revolves around department heads participating. That's the eight twenty-four, and this is what we refer for sidewalk and easement relative to the roundabout project. Mr. Callis, is there a motion?
Yep. I make the motion to approve for eight dash twenty-four municipal referral for sidewalk installation and easement procuring for a state roundabout project.
A motion by Mr. Callis pursuant to Connecticut general statutes eight dash twenty-four for the municipal referral to planning and zoning, considering this particular project. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Rooney. We have in our packets a very detailed description of the project from Mr. Schatzlein, who's present this evening. Mr. Callog, I don't know if you want to kick off this round of discussion?
Absolutely, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the issue, the situation here is that as part of the roundabout project, the state of Connecticut has agreed to extend a sidewalk from the roundabout to Town Hall. As part of that, as Mr. Schatzlein has put forth in his memo, there are many steps that need to be happened. On page two of two, item number six, you'll see several items that are, need to be done by Town Council. The reason why I'm asking you to consider this tonight is the first bullet under item six is for the secretary eight twenty-four referral process to planning and zoning so that they can render a recommendation and bring it back to Town Council. All of the other items that are on here are in process in terms of the negotiation of an easement with the Washington Lodge, preparing, you know, are, are down the road, we would need to go for the S E P permits, et cetera. However, this process, eight twenty-four, takes a little bit more time in terms of having to go to planning and zoning and come back. So the thought process was to get that started now so that that could be happening in parallel to some of these other efforts. So with that, I'll, I'll turn it over to Mr. Schatzlein, who can talk about it further and answer any technical details we have relative to the project itself.
Mr. Schatzlein?
Ken pretty much hit on everything. I provided in the narrative, it can be a good description. Item number six, as he indicated, does tell you the tasks that the council needs to do. This is a full state project, funds are all provided by the state, this is free for the town, the map and anything like that. Apparently, the state received some funds that were earmarked for the town. I don't know if you guys remember, but like twelve or thirteen years ago, there was a project along Monroe Turnpike for widening, and that project never happened. And it was very surprising, but it stayed in the bin of projects, and that money was earmarked for the town. So when I heard about the fact that they were, they were reissuing that money to the state and not the town, I, we were given the opportunity to comment on it by the Metro Todd, and I had suggested that we use those funds for something, well, they, they required that they would have to be used for something along the corridor of the Monroe Turnpike. So it was suggested that they use it for the monument that's going to go in the roundabout. So a little more than a hundred thousand dollars is going toward that. And then also asked, well, why not extend some of the sidewalks? Their project included putting walks in from around the roundabout up to the library. And so it was suggested that, well, why don't we bring it a little further and tie it right into the town green and the town hall. So they agreed to do that. Sidewalk's going to be located to the north side of Washington Lodge, in that grass lawn area. And it's kind of serpentine in layout to avoid some of the trees, and there's a little monument there, dedication monument. It'll be a concrete sidewalk, and as it approaches the main driveway out here that runs along the front of the Town Hall, there's an old utility vault at that location. So in order to make the grades work, they're going to have to put in a little retaining wall. I gave you a sketch showing where that would go. They wanted to put in a modular block wall, and we suggested that they use fieldstone so it was more harmony with the other walls that are out on the green and the library area, and they needed to do that.
It's the knee wall, right, Mr. Schatzlein?
What's that?
Defined as knee wall?
Yeah, they're defining it as a knee wall, very, very low retaining wall that'll hide that exposed vault that's out there. It's kind of tied with the.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Schatzlein. Any questions? Mr. Mauer?
Well, it appears that this would all be covered by the money that's earmarked for the town through the state. Am I correct in my assumption that any maintenance of those sidewalks would then fall to the town?
Yes, they met with the town in the early stages of the roundabout project. The town agreed to provide maintenance by the Park and Market Department. We're going to run that quickly from the Town Hall down the walks and around the roundabout.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mr. Condon?
You said it was leftover money from ten, twelve years ago. Does the amount of money equate to what we're having done, or is there capability of extending that sidewalk to Big Y or further down? That's a fair amount of money from extending twenty-five, I would think.
Yeah, I asked about that, and they, they don't see, they, they didn't see a direct tie in to go south. That north was a little different situation, but they didn't jump it that going to the south.
Okay. But are we getting about equal funds back, or not even close?
Not even close. That was over in excess of a million dollars.
Is there any potential of grabbing that any other way?
I don't believe so. It, it was headed, all of it, headed directly back to the state. I was shocked to hear that it was still available after all the time. But, so, you know, tried to grab as much as possible, but there was, what they needed was an active project that they could help, that they could allocate it for. It had to be active. You couldn't say, well, we'd like to do such and such a project, we don't have anything ready to go. So that's why they met for the roundabout.
Mr. Or?
The monument, what is the, what monument's going to be in the middle of the roundabout? Just curious.
There's a monument in the middle which is going to be a granite bell pile. It won't be functioning, but it'll be more of a sculpture on the top. But, do you remember how it was, I believe it's about twenty feet or so? Two, twenty to thirty feet. And it's two thirds shredded, allowing it to come out of the ground with a bell, stationary bell, it's not going to be operated like I said. And on each side, the four sides, it would be a medallion. And the medallions are, one is the Boston Monroe, the other three are the gazebo, the train station, and the. The monument was an integral part of the roundabout because they, they needed a vertical element so that as the cars approached, they'd be seeing that. These trees that they're going to put in, they kind of funnel into it, and then the monument is a definite element, key, key element of their design.
It was also a two plant, a second place for Town Monroe into that.
My understanding that it was the Historical Society that designed the monument and the subgraph?
That was a mixture of, sort of, designing my office.
They were involved in it?
Yeah, it was a collective.
Thank you.
Any further comment, Mr. Condon?
Just one question, not having ever driven one, but eighteen-wheelers going around there, no problem from a, with standpoint?
Yeah, the way they're designed is that a roundabout has a shoulder that's of a different material that the trucks actually go up on. But because of the visual and the texture variation, as the cars go through, they won't go up. So the whole idea is traffic calming, to slow down the vehicles and make the, the speed more uniform. So they go slowly, but they, they, they don't stop like they would at the intersection now. And so that ultimately, it's more efficient. But, yes, the trucks will be able to.
It's like obstruction of view, but I get it.
Any further comment? All right, seeing none, thank you, Mr. Schatzlein, and Mr. Callog. I'll call for a vote on the eight twenty-four municipal referral regarding this matter. All those in favor, please show your hands, please. And against, motion carries nine to zero. All right, going back to B, is the Emergency Preparedness Grant Administrative Services Agreement. Mr. Callis, is there a motion?
Yes, I make a motion to approve the Emergency Preparedness Grant for thirteen thousand seven hundred and two dollars. Mrs. Brought, who's the Director of Health, wrote that the funding will be used to continue Health Department Emergency Preparedness activities for the town of Monroe and our region.
Motion by Ms. La Palace, is there a second? Second by Mr. Condon. For discussion, I'm going to ask Mr. Callog to just fill us in on behalf of his department head, Ms. Brought.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this, this agreement is in most fashions identical to the previous Emergency Preparedness Grants that have come to the Health Department in prior years. As I outlined in my memo to you, the state of Connecticut has decided to no longer administer this grant directly with each local health department and district in the state, and has instead designated regional fiduciaries. In our region, they've selected Yale and Haven Health System. So the, what we have before you is instead of a grant between Monroe Health, you know, Town Monroe's Health Department and the State of Connecticut Department of Public Health, as we've had in the past, is now with Yale. However, you will see, you know, but for the, the small piece directly with Yale, most of this agreement that's referenced is very similar. It's, it's the identical language that the state has always utilized in this grant, with very similar terms and deliverables that we have always provided under this grant in the past. We utilize this grant to offset the Director of Health salary for the various activities that she does in, in providing deliverables and the services under this grant, which all go towards making our Health Department more prepared for public health emergencies.
Thank you, Mr. Callog. Are there any questions or comments regarding this agreement?
Mr. Callog, on page seven, on the Yale part, it, it was just something that jumped out at me. Have, do we now, or have we ever had an M R C for the region, which is something that it says that is a requirement?
Yeah, so the Stratford Trumbull Monroe Medical Reserve Corps actually was founded by me when I was a Town of Stratford employee. It was created back, right after nine eleven, there were a lot of efforts done for smallpox preparedness, and there were a large collection of volunteers that had been gathered for that many, many years ago, again, back when I was with Stratford. We transformed that group that was created into a medical reserve corps. The, the reason why it was those three towns together is the state of Connecticut has designated Stratford, Trumbull, Monroe to work together in what they call a mass dispensing area, to work collaboratively for any kind of mass vaccination or mass distribution of medications in response to a public health emergency. So Stratford is actually the host agency, so they manage the M R C, they are responsible, and they receive some, some, not a lot, but some incremental funding through the, through a different funding stream to manage that. So they manage the database of the volunteers, they handle all the logistics behind the scenes, but the volunteers are recruited from all three towns, and, you know, we have volunteers that have, you know, been called upon. It, it is actually a sister program of the CERT program, so you're familiar with that. It's just a little bit more, they're different, they have different missions, different roles, but it's under the same umbrella that the Citizens Corps. but it's under the same umbrella that the Citizens Corps.
Okay.
So we do have an M R C that we are a part of, and we are active in recruiting, not only for that M R C, but for all the medical reserve corps in our region, which goes from Greenwich to Stratford.
So that's a yes?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you for the thorough answer.
Any further discussion or comment? All right, seeing none, I'll call for those in favor of this agreement, and against, motion carries nine to zero. Moving on to the two added items, E is the legal services agreement.
Yeah, I think they had a motion. Why do we do that? Is there a motion?
Okay. Who's questioning, who's questioning my motions?
Is there another someone?
Nobody. We know, we know there was a motion, somebody's not paying attention down there, I don't know who it is, uh. Uh, moving on to item B, you get a one hour delay, this is what you get, right? Moving on to E is the item that we moved off the consent calendar, which is the town attorney agreement for the furnishing and acceptance of legal services, Mr. Pelles, is there a motion for? Do I have a motion to approve and authorize the, for selectmen to enter into the agreement to furnish and accept legal services between the town of Monroe and the proposed town council, Jeremy F. Haye, so, motion by Mr. Reed, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Ms. Pelles, for discussion, I'll turn the floor over to you, Mr. Kellogg, it's fairly self-explanatory, it's a simple one-page agreement that was included in the packet with a cover letter from Mr. Kellogg, I'll turn it over to you quickly.
Yes, so, correct, so pursuant to the charter, I've made the, I've made the appointment to town attorney, however, also pursuant to the charter, as this is an agreement, I am presenting it to council. It is a very, fairly simple and straightforward, I think it speaks for itself, so unless there's questions, I will.
Thank you very much, and I want to thank you for presenting this agreement to council, I think it's the first agreement since I've been on council that we've seen between the town of Monroe and legal council, so thank you for. You want to bring it to our attention? Somebody had a question, Mr. Maurer?
Actually, the question was later answered in your selectmen's report, I was curious as to the transition period with Attorney Fracassini and how that was going to settle, and you answered that during your selectmen's report, so no further questions.
Any further comments or questions? All right, seeing none, I'll call for a vote, to authorize and approve, all those in favor, and against, motion carries nine to zero. And item F is our Q D S agreement, so is there a motion to approve and authorize the selectmen to enter into the quality data service, tax payer inquiry web hosting services agreement? Motion by Mr. Reed, is there a second? Second, second by Mr. Condon, again, one, can't get any simpler than this agreement, six paragraphs, if you call it that, agreement between the town of Monroe and quality data service, I believe, this was on our consent calendar, what was requested, we pulled off by Ms. Agulon, Ms. Agulon, you have a question, so I'll just turn the floor over to you.
I just had a question for Mr. Kellogg, Mr. Kellogg, I don't even know if you'll know the answer to this, do you know if it's going to save in administrative costs, this service?
It is, it is going to save significant amount of staff time, so currently, the process whereby the tax collector provides, this information gets onto the website currently, this can be searched, however, it's in a couple of different places right now, it's not all on one page, and the process to get that data up there is manual and very time consuming, so currently, data is extracted off of one system, massaged into a different format, and then manually uploaded onto our website, that is why it's currently only done on a weekly basis, it's not on a monthly basis, so this offers us, this will be fully, fully automated, nightly update, and will eliminate all that manual effort currently done by the tax collector.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, any further comments? All right, if none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor of this agreement, and against, motion carries nine to zero. That concludes our new business, second public participation, and any of the members of the public wish to participate in the second public participation session? Don't all jump up at once? Seeing none, I will close, second public participation, motion to adjourn. Motion by Ms. Pelles, is there a second? Second, Mr. Condon, all those in favor, motion carries nine to zero. Good night, thank you, everybody.